I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction City Council meeting to order. The invocation be led by Vice Mayor Rizzi and the pledge allegiance will be by Councilman.
Nesser.
Nesser, sorry. All of a sudden drew a blank.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you in the decisions that we make that will affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. Father, we ask for your protection for all of our first responders, those serving in our military, and all of their family members. We ask that they be brought home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Present.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Greml?
Your Honor, Councilmember Greml is at a funeral right now of her uncle, former Representative Frank Pratt.
Councilmember Nesser?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Present.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Consent agenda. As a reminder, all the items under consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a councilman wishes to remove an item for further discussion, requests will be made prior to approving of the consent agenda and it will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Awards and presentation. Now, I'm going to do something a little bit different. I'm going to have some of my other councilmembers help me out a little bit. But I'm going to start out with the first one, and it's called the Red Ribbon Week. Cities across America have been plagued with numerous problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and the hope lies on the hard work and determination of our community to create a drug-free environment. And whereas local leaders in government and in the community know that the support of the people in the neighborhoods is the most effective tool they can have in their efforts to reduce the use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs by the citizens of Apache Junction. And whereas Red Ribbon was chose to symbolize commemorative the work of Kitty? Kaminda?
No.
Excuse me, for a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference. And the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle involvement in the drug preservation efforts. And whereas the City of Apache Junction values the health and safety of all our citizens, substances abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and is continuing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidental homicides and suicides. Whereas it is the goal of the Red Ribbon Week in the City Council of Apache Junction to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, service organizations, and all aspects of this campaign and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without legal drugs or illegal drug use of legal drugs. And whereas October 23rd to 31st, 2021 has been designated as Red Ribbon Week, calling on all Americans to show their support for drug-free state by wearing a red ribbon and participating in drug-free activities during that week. Now therefore I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to 31st, 2021, as Red Ribbon Week in Apache Junction, Arizona of Pinell County, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, media, religious, and education institutions to wear and display red ribbons and participate in drug-free activities throughout that week, joining the rest of the state in promoting red ribbon collaboration in a drug-free America. And I'm throwing it on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have DEA SAC Dave Reeves come up and accept the proclamation.
We usually scoot out of the way.
I'll need the chair.
Turn the wastebasket upside down.
Well, the mayor's coming back. The mayor, City Council, Tom Kelly, your police chief. As you know, each year we, as a city, do this proclamation for former DEA agent Enrique Camarena, who was killed in Guadalajara in the late, early 84s. Each year we try to do something within the community to combat the continual use and misuse of drugs that we have in our society. And with certain current events, it continues to be a surge on our southern borders. This year, we were honored to have originally SAC or Special Agent in Charge Sherri Oz, we didn't hear her, but she got tied up at another event. So as I explained to the mayor before we started, that Mark or Dave is not Sherri Oz, but he'll be doing a short presentation. I also want to let you know that through the schools this week, or next, I'm sorry, next week, through our dear officer and school resource officer, we're going to be hitting the grade schools and they have a special presentation. They're going to do all the children in our schools. DEA has been gracious enough to give us hopefully enough red ribbons for any of the children that would want some. And whoever here in the audience tonight that would like a red ribbon or something to just display their support will be available after the council meeting. But before I go too far, I just wanted to do a real quick thing and let you know that it's been, it is an honor to have actually DEA here to accept your proclamation. And I think this is the first time that the city's actually had a special agent in charge, or at least an assistant special agent in charge from the federal government here that actually has wanted to come out to show their appreciation and talk a little bit. So without further ado, I'll pass the mic over to you.
Thanks, Chief. Is this thing on?
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of City Council, and all here here tonight. My name is David Reams. I'm the Assistant Special Agent in Charge of DEA's Phoenix Field Division. On behalf of Special Agent in Charge Sherri Oz, who could not be with us tonight, thank you for inviting DEA to receive the Red Ribbon Proclamation from your city and for the opportunity to speak here tonight about a subject near and dear to my heart, Red Ribbon Week. Most folks know that Red Ribbon Week is an annual event, providing a platform to talk to our youth about the dangers of illegal drugs. This topic is especially important today as we here in Arizona, like the rest of the country, are being overwhelmed with drugs that look like prescriptions that our doctors may give us, but in reality are simply illicit fentanyl disguised to look safe. One of these pills can kill an adult, so the danger to kids is even greater. I am the father of two sons, and I've spoken at their school during Red Ribbon Week every year for the better part of two decades. But recently, this message has become more urgent and more critical because the stakes are so much higher. No illicit drugs are safe, especially for kids. But fentanyl raises the stakes dramatically.
Absolutely.
I have passed this message many times in many venues, and the best way to stay safe from drugs is to never begin using them. All that's true, and the goal of Red Ribbon Week every year. It is DEA's signature effort to reduce kids' demand for drugs, and it's a noble goal. Most of us at DEA have kids of our own, and we live in the communities we serve. So we're very motivated to get this message out, to make kids understand that illegal drugs only hurt people. This is all important to us, and this is the part of the Red Ribbon Week that people see. But the genesis of Red Ribbon Week, as you guys have alluded to, goes deeper than just the desire to keep kids away from illegal drugs. To understand where Red Ribbon Week comes from, you have to understand a little bit about an American hero named Special Agent Enrique Camarena, Kiki to his friends. Kiki was a DEA agent who grew up only a few hours away in Calixto, California. Kiki was a Marine during the Vietnam War and returned home to Calixto to serve as a police officer. Answering the same sort of call that many of us have heard, he joined DEA to protect his community and his country from the evils of drug trafficking. Kiki worked in California for several years before he decided to take the fight directly to the enemy in Guadalajara, Mexico. Kiki spent several years investigating a rising threat to America and the world, a drug trafficking organization that would become the Sinaloa Cartel. And Kiki was a tireless investigator. He worked very hard to really understand Mexican drug trafficking and put a picture together of their activities. Kiki learned a lot about them, was successful in hindering their poisonous trade. The danger grew to Kiki and his family as he became increasingly successful in his work, culminating in his kidnapping by drug traffickers. Kiki was held by his captors for days, enduring torture by these evil men who tried to break Kiki's spirit and end his interference in their filthy business. Finally, the torture overcame Kiki and he succumbed to his injuries. Rafael Caro Quintero, current leader within the Sinaloa Cartel, has been charged with Kiki's murder and remains a wanted fugitive and an active DEA target. So Red Ribbon Week is always a poignant time for us, since beyond the bracelets and the presentations, we know what this week is all about, because of the sacrifice of Special Agent Kiki Camarena. This year, especially for us in Arizona, it becomes even more poignant because of the sacrifice of DEA Group Supervisor Mike Garbo, who was killed in Tucson, October 4th, in the line of duty. Sorry. This is a watch that all of us in law enforcement stand. All give some, but some give all. So I thank you, Mr. Mayor, honored guests, for inviting me to speak to you tonight and allowing me to share some of my passion for Red Ribbon Week. It's truly privileged to address you and play any part that I can in upholding Kiki's legacy and trying to keep our kids safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One last statement. This weekend, we'll be doing the Drug Takeback that we do every year with DEA, actually twice a year. So if anybody out there that's watching has any used or unused drugs they want to get rid of instead of throwing away, or some kid or child will get a hold of them, or they wanted to have them disposed legally, we'll be at, from, on Saturday, from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock by the station, we will continue to accept the drugs dropped off there. And as you all know, we've been doing this since 2007. We were the first city in Arizona that started it or did it. We will continue to do it as long as we can. Better to get it in our possession and have it destroyed and burned up than have some child accidentally take it, not what it is. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thank you, DEA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I said we had some more. Recognize November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Krista.
National Heritage, excuse me, National American Indian Heritage Month, November 2021. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous, excuse me, indigenous people. And whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historic activities occur. Now therefore, I, Krista Rizzi, Vice Mayor, on behalf of Chip Wilson, our mayor, by virtue of the authority invested in our mayor, the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim November as the National American Indian Heritage Month in the City of Apache Junction and urge all of our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And we have, I believe, Peggy Mansu here to receive the proclamation. Mayor?
Thank you so much. I represent Daughters of American Revolution, and our Apache Trail chapter likes to serve in Apache Junction. Our main focus for the Daughters of the American Revolution is historic preservation, education, and patriotism. So I'm asking you, if you belong to a club or another organization and you need some help, please contact us. We just love working in Apache Junction. And thank you so much for the proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, designate the month of October as National Code Compliance Month.
National Code Compliance Month, October 2021. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for safety and welfare of the citizens throughout the United States through the enforcement of local codes or ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible and interactive role in the communities while providing quality, customer service, and excellence to the communities in which they serve. And whereas the American Association of Code Enforcement wants to recognize and honor code enforcement officers and professionals all across the United States and bring awareness to the importance of code enforcement to the communities of the United States. And now therefore, our mayor of Apache Junction, Walter Chip Wilson, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as National Code Compliance Month.
Victor.
Victor.
Nice tie, Victor. You're looking sharp.
Well, tonight is going to be really brief and fast. I just want to thank mayor and council and the executive team here in Apache Junction for giving us the tools necessary to be able to do the code enforcement here in the city. And I want to thank you for giving us the proclamation and letting people know that Code Enforcement Month is in the cover of 2021. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, designate the week of October 19th through October 24th, 2021, as Arizona Cities and Towns Week.
Whereas the citizens of Apache Junction rely on the city to experience a high quality of life in our community. And whereas cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver vital city services such as fire, police, and emergency medical response to ensure safe communities. And whereas cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, such as parks, utilities, and street maintenance, sanitation, recycling centers, libraries, community centers, and recreational programs. And whereas it is important for Apache Junction to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in our community. And whereas it is one of the responsibilities of the city officials to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various avenues and means. And whereas through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses and municipalities, and municipal staff can work together to ensure that services provided by Apache Junction can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Apache Junction joins with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October 17th through the 23rd, 2021, as Arizona Cities and Towns Week.
And we'll present that to Mr. Al.
Get in the good light.
Oh, good. Someone taller.
Turn the wastebasket upside down.
And on behalf of all the employees of the City of Apache Junction, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, and we were going to have a service award, but unfortunately, the individual is not feeling well today, so we're going to put it off to the 2nd of November meeting. All right. Regional Intergovernmental Updates. Does anyone have anything?
I do, Your Honor.
Yes.
I just want to point out, many of you obviously were in the room prior to the meeting and saw the 9/11 memorial plaque. And as one of the members of our local VFW in District 10, I just want to thank the City of Apache Junction and our Parks and Recreation staff for working with District 10 and the various Veterans of Foreign War Departments across District 10 and our auxiliaries in helping to not only have a wonderful memorial ceremony on September 11th, but working to help bring this plaque to the community of Apache Junction. Anybody who wasn't able to see it is out in the lobby for viewing after the meeting and pictures and stuff. And that will actually be installed here in the coming weeks at the Veterans Memorial Park here at the corner of Idaho and Superstition, so.
Okay, and yes?
Yes. Last Saturday, we had a very successful four hours of Make a Difference Day here in Apache Junction. We had a total of five projects. Four were city-owned improvement projects and one code case. We had over 100 volunteers, and that included the entire Apache Junction high school football team.
Yeah.
We also had several city employees, Bryant, Larry, Victor, Donna, Jenny, and I really hope I didn't forget anybody. And they all brought their kids, which I didn't know if that was punishment or exactly what that was, but
Field's character.
That's right.
And I'd like to thank Sandy Russell from Modern Woodsman. She donated $1,000 to the CDC for tools and supplies. Republic Services donated four rollouts that were filled to the size of the rollout and beyond. Cabot's Ace Hardware supplied a large donation for tools and work gloves. And Joseph Burks, the manager at Cabot, he was also one of our site captains. He volunteered, which was really special. I'd like to thank all of the donors for our T-shirts, and it can all be found on the ajcdc.com website. And I also want to thank our Parks and Rec Department for all the help that they provide in organizing, and the master gardeners. It was a very, very worthwhile Saturday.
Last week, I attended the Transportation Summit in Maricopa. Two Apache Junction projects were highlighted, one for Tomahawk Road from the US 60 to Southern, and the other from Southern Avenue to Weeks Wash to Tomahawks, from Weeks Wash to Tomahawk. One of the biggest takeaways from this, we had legislators and representatives all there. And some of the growing concerns is the population that we're seeing in Arizona is increasing and therefore is wearing on the roads. And there's no funding. That's very, everything is very, very tight. They rely on grants and things like that and programs to help pay for roads. And with the ever-popular EV, we're losing it at the gas pumps, too. So the more electric cars that are out there, the less gas, the less tax off the gallon of gas for the road. So it's a struggle. And basically, they're looking for many, many different ways to start funding a lot of these projects. There's a few of them out there, two of them luckily is for our town. Two of the applications have been submitted, so that it was nice to see that they were showcased there. So basically, hang on, everybody, things are going to be tight as far as the infrastructure here with the roads because of many different things.
We'll have an update on the homeless related to MAG next time, next one.
I attended the, I keep wanting to call it Gateway, the Gateway Airport, Mason Gateway Airport meeting today, and it's And it's, some of the activities that are going out there are really improving, and they're getting in some more airlines that are coming into the Mesa facilities there. And they're really moving forward to improve the terminal area. And it's going to be tremendous activities. Overall, they're starting to see a major increase in the number of passengers. Of course, during the COVID period of time, it really decreased dramatically. But right now, they're actually exceeding what they saw in 2018 and 2019. So the passengers is increasing and coming to visit our communities. And so, well, with that, I'll pass it on to City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager, I just wanted to add on to Councilmember Evans' reminder that the community is supporting and growing Make a Difference Day. And we're already starting to think about and plan for October of 2022. So those other groups that are, hey, I missed it, or just didn't know about it, or wish I would have known, like my own daughter, she's in student council, and she did get roped in. And we did the project, it was great, but she's like, I should have told my student council so we can do that group. And there's a few others. So I'm really excited about the progress we're making and how we're helping our community that way. This last week, I received a really neat letter from State Land Commissioner Lisa Atkins. This is the letter, I'm just going to read a portion of it from her. She says, "The unanimous vote of the Apache Junction City Council to annex nearly 6,700 acres of state trust land is not only a pivotal moment in the city's history, but reinforces the importance of working with our neighbors as we work on behalf of the beneficiaries. The development of superstition visits sets in motion an exciting new era for the City of Apache Junction, the region, and the trust. The Arizona State Land Department team is honored to have played a role in the region's future." So I wanted you to know that she had sent this letter to us, and we're already starting to work on the initial water sewer road planning and RFPs for those infrastructure items that will be coming in early 2022. And then that will conclude my portion of my report. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bravo for current events.
Thank you very much. Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the City of Apache Junction. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Couple of quick announcements for things coming up at that spooky time of the year, of course. So the VFW Post 9399, that's the post on Apache Trail and Saguaro, just west of Ironwood. They'll be playing host to a haunted house on Halloween weekend. That's October 29th and 30th, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Food, music, and of course candy, and a costume contest on Saturday night. Of course, there's also Halloween going on in our own Flatiron Park the same night, so watch for that as well. A reminder that the Founder's Centennial Committee continues to meet on the 2nd and 4th Wednesdays of the month. But we did want to get a big thank you to our local Fries, Fries Marketplace here on Idaho and Old West Highway. They just became a $5,000 sponsor, so thank you to Fries. There is still time to get in on our, displaying your original art in the city hall or at the library. You could contact the City Manager's Office to get in on that. Since we're talking a little bit about boards and commissions, I'm going to get a little plug in for our own program, which of course is the Citizens Leadership Institute. A lot of folks use that as the starting point when they're trying to get involved in the city and their community. The next class of CLI will be in January of 2022. It's an eight-course class, for those of you who are unaware. You can find out all about it because it's now online at ApacheJunctionaz.gov/cli. And so you could go there and get all the information, all the details, and of course, register for the next class. Our council wanted to make sure that you are aware that the Sonoran Farmers Market that had been in the Old Baches Plaza has moved out to Gold Canyon, is now part of this Gold Canyon Grub Fest from now on. And we wanted to thank all of our folks who were involved last week in our Wear Purple Day as we continue to mark Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the month of October. So that was taken last week. Those are your announcements for tonight, October 19th, 2021.
Thank you. Okay. Public hearings. Item number 12, ordinance number 1517, case number P-21-68-PZ, proposed rezoning of approximately 22 acres. Keshli.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I am a planner on staff, and tonight's presentation is a rezoning request for a 201 unit, single-family residential rental community to be named the Residences at Apache Trail. So the subject property is located at the southwest corner of Broadway and Tomahawk. It consists of two parcels and is about 22 acres in size. The western parcel is currently zoned High Density Multiple Family Residential, RM2, and the property to the east is zoned General Commercial, B1. And the request is to rezone both properties to High Density Multiple Family Residential by Plan Development or RM2 PD. And I thought it's important to mention that the parcel that is zoned commercial is actually a portion of a larger commercial property, but the rezoning request is only for this northern section of the parcel. So here's the conceptual landscape plan for the property, which I think provides a good depiction of the overall feel and look of this community. The community will consist of a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, and there will be eight two-bedroom carriage units as well, kind of located centrally throughout the development. The development will provide three different architectural types, and I believe two elevation types per floor plan. And the full set of conceptual elevations were provided in your staff report, so I'm just going to kind of give you a couple examples to give you an overall feel of what the development will look like. So this is an example of the attached duplex-style units, so this is representative of the one-bedroom units. And then this is the standalone units, which would be representative of a two- or three-bedroom unit. And as you can see in, you know, these elevations, there are multiple material types such as wood shutters, coach lights, stucco body lace finish, so really gives a nice look to the community. And then all of these units will have a private yard. Here's a conceptual elevation of the carriage units. Again, there will be eight of these within the development, so it's a two-bedroom unit located above garages. And these are the only two-story units being proposed throughout the entire community. The rest are single-story. I've also included the conceptual elevations for the clubhouse. This clubhouse will also be part of a larger amenity area that will include a pool, fire pits, barbecue area, and will be located right at the front entrance of this development. Here's a look at the conceptual monument plans as well as wall plan. These colors and materials were picked in order to kind of complement the overall feel of the development. Here's a conceptual wall plan. There will be a decorative wall along both Broadway and Tomahawk, as well as view fencing throughout the development. So this applicant is requesting a plan development as a part of this rezoning, and this table represents the overall development standards for the community. And you can see from this table, they're only requesting one deviation, which is a reduction in the rear setback from the RM2-based zoning of, the rear setback is 20 feet, and they're asking for a reduction in 10 feet. They think that this reduction is more appropriate for this kind of rental community. In terms of public input, a sign was posted at the site, notices were sent out to property owners within 300 feet, and it was advertised in the newspaper. A neighborhood meeting was held by the applicant, and one neighbor attended. That same neighbor also emailed the city and was in support of the development. With that, staff recommends approval of P-2168-PZ, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any initial questions, but the applicant is here with their own presentation as well.
Your Honor, in regards to the piece of B1 zoning that is being requested to be moved to RM2, how much land is being requested to be moved?
I believe it's about seven acres.
Of the 22 acres, correct?
So, let's go back to my, so the B1 portion is, that's about seven acres. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure the size of this entire parcel, though.
So is the current RM2 zoning 22 acres, and then the other piece is seven, so for a total of 29, 28 acres?
So in total, both pieces are 22 acres. So the RM2 is about 15.
Okay. That makes sense.
And combined, it's 22.
So given the potential rezoning of that piece of it, would this be split parcels at that point, then?
So it would go through a process where that, so it would be rezoned, and then it would be split off, and then combined into one parcel.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Do you think there might be any issues with reducing that setback?
I don't believe so. So the rear setback really will only apply to right here, any of these units. So it's really only, and it's going to be their private yards, which is why they're requesting that. So typically, in an RM2 multifamily, you'd have, you know, a larger building. And so these, since they're individual units more so, you know, we don't see any harm in having that kind of reduction for this style of development.
We just don't want to create that issue where people are living next to a business, and then here come the complaints with the noises and the smells, and that's why I asked.
Applicant want to speak?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time. My name's Adam Baugh, 2525 East Arizona, Billmore Circle. I have a lot of slides, but I think I'll just give you the abbreviated presentation today because I think staff's done an excellent job helping us get to this point. When I look at this property here, you notice some odd geometry with it. And sometimes these parcels, when they have odd shapes, really underlie or belie that there's other things that follow it. Sometimes those conditions include topography concerns, or trash, or poor access. And those are some of the conditions that we have to deal with in developing this property. If you've been by it, you've seen the dumping that's occurred there. You've seen some of the trash piles. And if, during a heavy storm event, you've seen a lot of water that comes to that area. And for those reasons, and also because the geometry of the property and its lack of frontage a little further south, it's been undeveloped for a long, long time, even though the zoning that I'm asking for, it's actually been on place of this property since, I don't know how long, but quite a while. The challenge that we find is trying to address these conditions and create meaningful development. And they're not always easy. I think there's a lot of better properties that you can develop quicker and get out of the ground faster. But the person who's willing to tackle these problems generally is rewarded by bringing a great quality development that benefits there, and I think that's what we can do today. So what we've been able to do with our development is bring in something that solves the weird shape of the property, addresses the topography and the wash and the rain that comes through there, and also some of the trash and dumping that's been occurring on the site. But in order to make that work, we need to add five acres, not seven, of what is the eastern side to average and leverage out the cost of improvement and the density needed to make this project work. There you go. Is that better? Okay. What's important to us is that this map right here, so much of this property is already zoned multifamily. We're really only talking about the five acres on the east side. And through that, by adding that in there, we can actually achieve the type of density that you'd expect. That third pull-up point is important for us, the economies of scale. Most of your multifamily apartment developments across the valley are about 17 to 23 acres on average, or only 12, excuse me, 17 to 23 units per acre, or 12. That's actually really, really low-density multifamily. So the only way you make that work is to have the right amount of acreage to spread that out. We think that we've brought in something that's really great for this area, something that will reinject new product that you don't particularly have much, more importantly, give the feeling of living in a single-family home, but in a rental capacity. And this includes these two applications, both the rezone and the general plan amendment. What we can do is provide a better product to market, single-family style living, more open space as required by code, 24-hour management, and also architecture. We have five different types of products and three different elevations, where each of them is five, so it looks like 15 different homes in the community. You don't normally get that with an apartment-style living. We love the fact that we have private rear yards, and to your point and your question about the rear yard setback reduction, people choose to live here because it feels like a home, but they don't have to maintain the air filters, or the landscape timers, or the pool equipment. All that's done for them. I'll kind of cover some things briefly, but we find that as we over amenitize the site and the improvements on the inside, we get a better quality tenant. Better quality tenants allow us to have more of a premium rent. And it's these types of things that we can do on the inside that help us achieve that type of a user here. It's also important to talk about the architecture. These don't look like apartments at all, but they are rental homes. And our clubhouse, our leasing space, kind of give you that feeling of premium quality. You've seen some of these, so I'll just kind of skip through them pretty quickly. But at the end of the day, we find that people who want to live in the area, have grown up out of their homes, maybe are selling to capture equity, but still want to stay nearby, rent here. We have newlyweds, we have people who are looking to bridge of ownership, who've lived in apartment complexes and now are looking to buy, but there's a bridge of living in arrangement in between. This is the perfect type of situation for them. At the end of the day, we find it's the way we amenitize the product, the offerings that we have within there, the ability to have single-family living, all these pull-up points here help illustrate why someone's willing to live in an arrangement like this. And I hope that you'll find more of these opportunities coming to Apache Junction, because this isn't a trend, it's actually a new land use category. And if done right, will set the bar and expectation for future users down the line. At the end of the day, we think this is a perfect use for an infill site. We've got a big wash coming through us, we've got to clean up some things on the property, and we have some environmental impacts. But we know that we can tackle those problems, and in so doing, bring a higher-quality development than you've typically seen, and provide that type of housing diversity for workforce that isn't really present much here in the city. So for those reasons, I hope you'll support the case. And I could go on and on, but I just want to be brief with you tonight and entertain any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions?
I do, Your Honor. First of all, you're throwing my OCD off by having 201 units. Can you make it 202 or 200? 201 is just, anyway. In regard, you mentioned, obviously, that these are rental units. Do you have a rough estimate of price point? I mean, seeing rental opportunities coming into the community is huge, and it's definitely addressing a crucial need, but we also need lower-income housing and more affordable housing, and that's something we desperately lack. So I'm afraid when I hear the term higher-end rentals, that these are going to be priced out of opportunities for families to be a part of.
Sure. It's a valid concern. I think one thing that we've done that I haven't seen others do yet is add in a product type for, you have one bedrooms, you have two bedrooms, three bedrooms. We've done something different. So we have two types of one bedrooms. We have what we call one-bedroom small and a one-bedroom large. And so that way, we can capture, I think, a bit of a larger range of renter profiles than the typicals that just have the one bedroom, and the two, and the three. And then we also have the studio units above the garages, which also can be offered at a bit different price point. So I can't tell you specifically what our rents will be, because I don't think that's determined until, I mean, if I had started this and told you rents six months ago, they would have been changed because the cost of materials drastic. But we added that one-bedroom small for the very reason of catering to a broader segment of this community.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to say, I just love the plan. I love the fact that there's studios. I mean, my first place I rented was a studio, and nobody's made any studio apartments for how many years now. And the fact that it has doggy doors, and it is very much more home-like. My only disappointment is it's going to be much harder to eat at toast across the street in the morning.
Which Blunk is not worried about.
But very nice project.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. You know, I'm not, I'm becoming less and less of a fan of changing our commercial to residential and continuously changing our general plan. I'll just say that upfront. I do like the plan. Again, we're faced with the issue of, here sits a property that, you know, here comes a property that's been sitting and sitting and sitting, and we have a developer to come in. I do like the plan, but I just, you know, just to the fellow, other council members just wanted to share, I'm less and less of a fan of continually changing these commercial properties over, so. properties over, so, thank you.
I'm going to throw one comment in this aspect on it. It's one of the things I think this property was used a lot for. And one of our local TV stations have a video of having two vehicles out there attempting to do four-wheeling and spinning in the wash and playing in the, in and out of the wash, and then going out onto the road and putting mud all over, so our city staff has to go out there and now suddenly have to scrub the street to remove all the nice mud that was left behind.
Yeah, the evidence is shown in the picture right here of all the trails, the off-road vehicles.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would any of the public like to speak now? Yes?
George Shorter, 244 West Virginia. I, I did say, I like this. This is a perfect fit. It's an environment where it's low-density, really, low scape. I would urge the developer to consider developing the arroyo, because that is part of the, the beauty of our area, of our state. These arroyos attract little animals, you know, fauna, things that people in this area, in this commercial property, are going to want to see. Remind them that they're human. Remind them that they have a nice place to live, not thousands of houses around them impeding their, you know, everything. This is a good fit. Brayden had a good point. More and more, we need to find these developments for less income. I don't know where to get their facts from, but I'd, I'd say a third of Apache Junction makes less than $50,000 a year. And more are on government assistance every day, every year. So, yeah, you bring the population, but we get all that, too. So we really need to be choreographing these types of properties that are beautiful, accessible to everybody, not just retirees, not just out-of-staters. That, that's crap. We, we need more for us here, not for outsiders. Thank you.
Yes?
I think you forgot the state of his name and address.
Oh, yeah.
I'm Jeff Barlett. I'm over at 108 North Meridian Drive, apartment 220, here in Apache Junction, Arizona. If you notice my address there, I live in an apartment. I rent. I know what it's like to rent an apartment here. And one concern I have is, over the years, the cost of living has been going up and up and up, especially here in Arizona, because you've got people from all these other states who want to move into Arizona, usually because of warmer weather, better economy. And the thing I'd like to say is, this looks like a good development. I think it would be very good to bring in 201 houses here. I mean, it's good to see that someone's willing to take a vacant property and turn it into something. I mean, this property looks like it's been vacant for who knows how long. And it looks like the city has had issues, maybe even cleaning it up, based off what I'm hearing here. I mean, this is the free market solving your problems here. It's a good thing to see these houses come. And I personally don't like the idea of low-income housing. I mean, any kind of government-subsidized housing, all it's going to do is just raise rent for everybody. I mean, when the government starts subsidizing things, it's just not a good idea, in my opinion. I personally think the best way to keep rent low is increase the supply and lower the demand. I mean, you're bringing in 201 houses here. It's going to lower the demand, and it's, over time, it's going to co, lower the cost of living, because the more supply, the lower the demand. It's really that simple. And I personally think it would be a good idea to let the, I mean, I think it would be a good idea to have these houses come in, and I think the more the development, the better, when it comes to housing businesses. I mean, I, I can see, I know some council members have concerns about moving something from business to residential. I, I personally, I mean, it's, I mean, if this land has been vacant for who knows how long, I mean, I don't know when the next time a business owner is going to want to use it. So, I mean, that's just my opinion there. And I think, like another resident said, I mean, I think housing should be for everyone. I per, I don't know if this is like planning on being one of those 55-plus communities. I personally don't like that. I mean, I'm a big fan of the fair housing laws, and I think, I mean, I know the 55-plus communities are legally allowed, but, I mean, I, I kind of see it as a form of discrimination. I think it should be for everybody. And I don't think housing should be based off of someone's income. I should be, I think it should be based off of the free market. And I think bringing in houses is a good idea to help lower the cost of living. And thank you for hearing my concerns.
Anyone else?
Steve Byfield, 561 East Saddlebutte. I am here to represent the Chamber of Commerce. I'm the chair for the chamber. And we want to throw our support towards this development. As we have said in the past, planned developments like this, they're done in beautiful, beautiful view. The apartments look great, surrounding. I mean, you go by there now, and you're right, there's just trash and everything, and that's nothing to look at. This brings in more people, more sales tax, gives us more money, the city, to do streets and provide services for the, the city. It's our, our, our goal, that's what we go with. And for people to disagree with growth, it, it's not good if it's not done right. But these are, these are done right. There's a beautiful development. You've got a developer that's been in Arizona many, many years doing this. They're going to do it right. And those apartments, yeah, who knows what they're going to cost? But the thing people don't understand, when you go to develop these, these developments like this, they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars just on permits and getting through the basics, and then the high cost of construction and everything else. You know, they, it's not a cheap process to bring in 201 homes into this community. It is very expensive. And, you know, maybe Brayden can rent that one house, you know, make, he could be, ignite security at it, so, you know. It could work. But we, we think that the business community, there's not a business one that would not support this, that, you know, there's going to be room, you know, customers for everything. Grocery stores, air conditioning, heating, repairs eventually, and it's going to, it's going to do well. And it's going to bring in that much more business, and anything you can simulate the business community, we're definitely behind it. Because we do need full-time residents all year. I mean, I manage one of the largest senior adult communities in, in the city, and I understand the, you know, the flux rate. We, we go from 120 people in the summer to 1,800 in the winter. So it's, it's a big influx, and it definitely affects our businesses. And we need more stable residents that live here all year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and council members. My name is Heather Wallace. I'm the acting superintendent of the Apache Junction School District. This project is exciting to the school district, as families would have a school close by to attend. The project is just over one mile from Desert Vista Elementary School, which is one of our elementary schools. We would welcome new families into the Desert Vista community. I speak for the district when I say we look forward to new students and families by supporting this project. Thank you.
Charles Beal, Lot 21, Superstition Villa. What I'm not hearing is the environmental impact of all this. And as we set to grow out in all these acres, we need to start considering that. I'd like to see solar on the clubhouse. I'd like to see moisture sensors for sprinkler systems. I want to understand EV charging. I think all these are important as we start to grow. These are things that the council needs to take in to consideration. As you make the, the allowance for the code changes, these are things you should be negotiating into those, you know? And retention basins, real important graywater catch basins, these are things we just talked about before this meeting. So, you know, the impact to the environment should always be forefront as we develop. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? I see no, no one else. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion for number, ordinance, rather, 1517.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the ordinance, ordinance number 1517 be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Ordinance number 1517, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for a proposed new rental community to be named the residences at Apache Trail, located on the property described in rezoning case P-21-68-PZ. A request by Sonoma Communities, represented by Adam Baugh of Withy Morris PLC, from general commercial B-1 and high-density multifamily residential RM-2 to high-density multifamily residential by planned development RM-2/PD, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
Okay, main motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1517, as read by the city clerk, be approved and adopted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs.
Uh, Your Honor, may I explain my vote? Before I do that. First of all, I will be voting yes, but I, I just want to take a second and recognize the fact that we've, for probably a very long time that I can remember, for the first time, we've had pretty significant business support behind this with the chamber, not only helping to advocate, but other local businesses as well. I've actually been fortunate enough to have the opportunity to talk to a few of the businesses in the area, all of which have been incredibly supportive of this project. And I think that that's a tremendous opportunity for Apache Junction as we continue to grow. Also want to highlight the fact that the school district has been here to support, in, in support of this project, which is not something that I've seen in the past. So that's very reassuring to me as a, as a council member in being able to support this project. So thank you all very much, and thank you to the developers for working with the city to bring this together. So with that, I vote yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
I'm just going to make a statement for, of clarification, because after the, the public hearing was closed, there was no more discussion. And I just want to clarify, it's not that I don't support growth. There were comments made about not supporting growth. And my statement about being hesitant to change commercial property to residential is, is not about stagnating growth in any way. I, I do like this development. I do think it helps our school district. I do think it helps local businesses. My opinion comes from looking down the road and having more businesses in the community. And the mindset of having rooftops and, and taking away from the commercial property is where that comes from. And it also comes from attending a regional economic meeting whereby many agencies and citizens from Gold Canyon expressed that they don't really have the ability to spend their money here in Apache Junction, because we're very limited in the businesses that we have. And so I just want to clarify, it's not about stunting growth or impeding it in any way. It's just a concern that I have. Do I like the development? Absolutely, I do. I think it is going to be beneficial. But I think at some point, we need to have, look down the road and be cautioned about continually changing commercial property over to residential. And with that, I am in support of this development, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay. Next item is case P-21-73-PZ. A proposed rezoning of approximately 14.77 acres. Now, we've also got to receive here that they've, the developer has asked for continuation because of the, well, was continued in the planning and zoning as well. But this is a public hearing, it's been advertised as it is, so we will do the public hearing portion of this and then move on.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Mayor. Good evening, council. As the mayor just noted, on September 28th, just three weeks ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear the initial presentation of this rezoning case. And at that time, they voted, they did not vote in favor or against, but they voted to continue this project out 60 more days. And so the letter that had been delivered was just an affirmation of that. So with that, just for the benefit of context, I just wanted to go through the really high-level items, just because it is a public hearing. So this is a rezoning of about 15 acres. It's 14.77, just with a little right-of-way cutoff. Just located almost immediately to the southeast of us, where we are right now. So it is currently zoned RSGR, and the proposal is to rezone this, these three parcels to RM2-PD. With that, it doesn't require a general plan amendment, just because it was considered part of the downtown mixed-use core. This is just a brief, kind of a, it's very similar. It is a rental home community. So each of these would be, they would be owned by the, the community overall, and then they are rented out, just like the project we saw before. This is an image of the site plan. Just in terms of formation, it's very similar. Though, a, as I understand that the applicant, and they may, they may wish to speak to it, there are some revisions being made to, to address some of the Planning and Zoning Commission concerns, so this isn't necessarily what the final project will look like. That there might be some minor, minor changes, I should say. The Planning and Zoning Commission, again, they voted 7-0 to recommend the continuance of the public hearings for, for this case, P-21-73-PZ, to the following dates. First, that the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing of Tuesday, November 23rd, would be held, and that the city council public hearing would be the following meeting, the December 6th. And with that, just, just to recap, their concerns were primarily, there was concerns about the location, and there were concerns specifically noted in the, in action to continue regarding traffic. So the applicant is performing a traffic study to, that was one of the reasons why they were given 60 days, just because so much time is needed in order to, to process the traffic analysis and so forth, of just how many, how many cars, how many people, how many horses, and the like. And that, that is why the continuance has been requested by both the commission and by the applicant.
You got any questions?
I do, Your Honor. The only question that I have is in regards to that traffic study. I happened to attend this planning and zoning meeting in person, and there was discussion on it happening now, as opposed to waiting a, a few more weeks, or even another month or two, to allow the winter visitors to come back. Is the winter visitor traffic being accounted for in this traffic study? Do you know?
Uh, I'm afraid I'd have to leave that for the applicant. They have indicated that they are undergoing it. As for how long, and I guess how many, or when the people come back, that analysis might be better answered by them.
Okay, thank you.
So all, all I know personally is that it is happening.
Thank you.
Okay. The applicant, would you like to speak on this?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Brennan Ray, 1850 North Central, here on behalf of Keystone Homes. I would simply like to respond to Councilmember Biggs's question, if I may, and we are fully in support of the continuance, as I indicated in my letter. With respect, through the mayor, Councilmember Biggs, with respect to that traffic impact analysis that we are conducting, it will take into account the winter visitors, even though when we go out and do that study, we place the little rubber strips in the road to get the counts. That obviously is today, but we will take into account the additional traffic that will be generated by winter visitors.
Great, thank you.
Want to have any questions of him?
I'm just curious to know how you do that, how you calculate, or how you project? How do you guess?
do you guess? Because it fluctuates from year to year. I'm just curious.
Uh, it does. Through the mayor, uh, Councilmember Rizzi, uh, in, in terms of how it is, I, I would defer to my traffic engineer who's not here, but I know that there is criteria, uh, National Institute of Engineers that has very, various forms of data that they pull from and, uh, factor that into their analysis.
I'm sure there's a formula.
They draw a number out of a hat.
Yeah. You, you also heard the, the one, uh, of the, uh, uh, chamber making a comment concerning there's, he has, uh, what'd he say, a hundred and some, uh, year-round residents in his, uh, community that goes over to eighteen hundred. So you can see what the, the impact is for our community.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Yes. Of course.
George Schroeder, two four four, West Virginia. I don't think we're hearing Mr. Schroder loud enough. Councilmember Schroder, we're gonna come up short with a lot of money, lots. And we had direction to staff to study everything about this. And it's part of the, we need to be the general plan. We're gonna have to start from scratch on this whole quadrant of sewer, water, electric, everything. We're gonna pay for that. Some way, somehow, we're gonna pay enormously for it. I don't think we should. This is a deferment. You want to come back in a couple of years when we have stabilized our economy? We have a better idea where our general plan is going to be? Because I plan to visit the general plan in a much different way. It's gonna change. We don't, we can't support it. We can't support pie in the sky dreams when, I'd say, a third of our neighborhoods don't even have streets, or they're falling apart. They don't even get sealed. I can't even get a curb. I'm supposed to be able to legal to do it, but I can't. So, the other thing is the traffic. We put in this, uh, merry-go-round, for lack of a better word, and that traffic is gonna get going, vroom, up Superstition Boulevard. And before you know it, bam, they're gonna slam on their brakes. And we're gonna have more accidents. Um, I don't know where they're pulling the death frame, but I got a good idea where they're pulling it from. But it's not gonna make any sense here. This is too much. And then we have the question of the heights. They want to put everything in the middle. It doesn't matter. It's still gonna block people's view of the mountain. Unacceptable. So we got no money for staff to really do any studies on this. We don't have any money for the infrastructure to start any of this general plan. We don't have money to do my streets. Where, where we gonna get this money from? I have ideas. You should really consider me for planning and zoning. I got money ideas. If our people can't find the money, I can. Thank you.
Yes.
So we're gonna have more people to streets.
I'm, uh, Jeff Barlett. I'm over at one oh eight North Meridian Drive, apartment two twenty in Apache Junction, Arizona. I remember three weeks ago, I attended that planning and zoning meeting where they were talking about this here. And like I said before, I mean, this is a hundred and sixty-six new homes for people to live in. And I personally like the idea of building more high-density houses in the area. And wh- what I told the Planning and Zoning Commission when I spoke in front of them is, I used to live in New York City, so in my opinion, high density is like a big giant tall apartment building. This ain't high density, in my opinion, but this is how you guys classify it as. I mean, that's just how I think here. And as far as this traffic study, I think it's just getting in the way for development. I see it as a roadblock for somebody to be building houses here. I, I mean, like I said, I mean, I lived in New York. I mean, that's where the traffic is bad. I mean, I used to drive to LA. I mean, I've driven all over this country. I know how traffic is. And my concern with traffic in this city is the construction over on Meridian, me getting, uh, getting to work, because I ride that way to go to work there. And so, I mean, if traffic is a, a concern, that's something where I think our council members should be looking at. I mean, I, I personally see, I mean, this is a, a good thing, just like the other thing I spoke on. I mean, this is housing for people. And like I said, it's gonna lower the demand if you increase the supply, which is gonna result in a lower cost of living. So, I mean, I'm hoping eventually this, I mean, I know you guys can't do anything tonight because there's a continuance, but hopefully this, uh, gets approved and it can bring in more homes. And also, this is part of the, I remember the, uh, the, uh, city, uh, employee saying that this was part of the general plan and staff was recommending approval for it. I think it's a good idea. And a lot of people might disagree with me on this, but, I mean, if you look at the Phoenix metro area on a map, Apache Junction is still part of the Fe- Phoenix metro area. I mean, if you zoom out, I mean, most of these general plans and how people plan things is to make everything look like the rest of it. Apache Junction looks a little different. It, compared to Mesa, Phoenix, Tempe, there's not a lot of development out here, and I personally would like to see more of it. We're still part of that Phoenix metro area. And I, when I was at that planning and zoning meeting three weeks ago, I didn't like how people were bad-mouthing Mesa, saying all these bad things about Mesa. I mean, Mesa's a good city to live in. I live directly on the border of Apache Junction and Mesa. I mean, I actually live in Maricopa County, but I'm still in the city limits of Apache Junction because the way the city limits are drawn. I have no problem with Mesa or Apache Junction turning into Mesa. I told them we should be more like Phoenix if we can. And I'd like to thank you for letting me speak here.
Yes.
Yvonne Cruiser, five four four North Hilton, and AJ. I just want to thank the Planning and Zoning for taking the time to do the traffic study. Uh, we drive Superstition as our main road back and forth into AJ. And my concern is how close that's gonna be to their main entrance with the roundabout. I see how people come out of that roundabout onto Superstition. Hardly anyone follows the speed limit on Superstition.
Guilty.
So, I do appreciate that you guys are gonna do the traffic study. Plus, I hope they also take into consideration that there are a lot of horse owners who cross the road right there at Royal Palm into the BLM land. So, I just want to thank you guys for taking the time to do the traffic study to, to do that, because Superstition's a busy road, and it's only too late. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Any additional comments from the council?
I, I just wanted to add something. Um, we hear that, um, we talk, when people talk about the growth here in Apache Junction and development, it's important to remember, we're kind of a baby city when you compare us to Mesa or Phoenix. We're, we're getting our time. It's happening. We're, we're gonna grow. We're gonna grow up. But, um, when you compare us to, uh, Phoenix, Mesa, some of these other cities, it's almost like oranges and apples, because we're not, uh, you know, they've been around a lot longer. So I just wanted to just share that information.
Anyone else? Well, I'm gonna make one comment myself in the aspect. Now, now, this is in our, uh, general plan area. And in our general plan area, um, there can be forty-foot-high buildings in this general plan, this, uh, area.
Yep.
And, uh, so the twenty-foot-high facilities that they're talking about for a majority of the property, I think is something that we need to look at in the aspect on it, as being a positive development for this area. Uh, so, and again, this is, uh, we have, we have to make a, Joel, do we have to make a motion to, to put a continuation on this?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to continue this to December, what, sixth, is it?
Seventh.
Seventh.
You are so moved.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes, your honor.
Okay, we will see the developer back. We have. Okay. I have been asked to take a short break before we start interviews. So, uh, we got one more. We got one more resolution here, so let's do that one first. So, uh, new business, resolution number twenty-one dash fifty-one, affirming the city's support for the Southwest Arizona Land Exchange. Uh, this is, uh, the, what we have done and did in the past for, uh, Resolution Copper, uh, activities. And, uh, uh, I, who, should I turn this over to?
Your honor, I'll, I'll just maybe, um, kick this off, and that in twenty thirteen, prior city council approved a resolution in support of the, um, Res- of Resolution Copper. And recently, at a Penal Partnership meeting, you were asked to consider another one. And this is before you, as another opportunity, it's been a significant amount of time for this city council to possibly consider a resolution like this.
Uh, yes, your honor. Uh, just as Bryant said, as the, uh, representative for the board for Penal Partnership for the council, uh, I was asked to bring this to the, the council to reaffirm our support, uh, in, in tandem with Penal Partnership, uh, as, uh, our neighbors to the east and south in Superior are going through this with Resolution Copper to, uh, uh, work through the, the process to allow them to continue. This would be billions of dollars into the state's economy and millions of dollars into Penal County, and, and it will have a direct impact, uh, in Apache Junction as, as upwards of eighty to ninety percent of the jobs that, uh, Resolution Copper will supply, uh, are here in Penal County. So, hopefully, many of those, uh, employees will live here in Apache Junction, should they choose, so.
Okay, anyone else? On this. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Your honor.
Yes.
I move that resolution number twenty-one dash fifty-one, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, reaffirming the city's support for the Southeast Arizona Land Exchange and Conservation Act, and recog- recognizing Resolution Copper Company for its investments and efforts in developing the copper mine near Superior, Arizona, enhancing the local, state, and regional economics be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes, your honor.
Okay, now we're up to the boards and commission appointments. So, want to take a five-minute break? Ten-minute break, excuse me.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Okay.
The council meeting back to order.
Yeah. I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it. We always have extra. Anytime.
Boards and, boards and commission appointments, considering for the annual appointments for boards and, boards of adjustment, Construction Board of Appeals, Health and Human Services Commission, Industrial Development Authority, Library Board, Municipal Property Corporation, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Public Arts. Okay. I'm going to start them off in the order of, do I have a motion for appointment for Board of Adjustment?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Sarah Snyder for one of our
Second.
Positions.
What's the expiration date? You have to include that.
Term to expire.
2024.
Oh, it is 2020. Oh, I forgot. We had this second piece of paper. For the term to expire on October 31st of 2024.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. For the second position in the Board of Adjustment?
I don't have a second.
Your Honor. I'd like to nominate Jaime La- Lanza. Jaime?
Jaime.
Jaime Lanza?
Jaime.
For when it expires?
The other one.
October 31st, 2024.
Wherever it is. I can't. Yeah.
Moved, moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
No.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Do I have a motion for appointment of Construction Board of Appeals? There are two appointments to be made.
We don't have a general contractor, so.
And zero applicants, Your Honor.
There's no applicant.
There is.
No applicants?
No. No applicants.
Okay.
None of the others were.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I can clarify, because there are three currently serving board members, technically, they would meet form. So if there aren't enough applicants, you know, the board can continue, even if there's not one appointed tonight.
Okay. Continue on that one then. Do I have a motion for appointment for Health and Human Services Commission? There are two appointments to be made. Yes.
Your Honor, I move that Dr. Brennan be appointed to the Health and Human Service Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2024.
You have your second.
My second, second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
No.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Second one?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Jeff Mitchell.
Second.
Move for time to expire when?
October 31st, 2024, I believe, Your Honor.
Yes. I keep forgetting that.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Do I have a motion for appointment of Industrial Development Authority?
Your Honor?
There are three appointments to be made. Yes.
Your Honor, I move that Jaime Lanza be appointed to the Industrial Development Authority for a term to expire on October 31st, 2026.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. For the second one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Sarah Snyder be appointed to the Industrial Development Authority for a term to expire October 31st, 2027.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
The expiration on that was, I'm sorry, what was that?
2027.
2027. October 31st.
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
No.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, four to two, Your Honor.
Okay. For the third one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Dr. Sutton be appointed to the Industrial Development Authority for a term to expire October 31st, 2027.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Tied on that one. Um, no.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Do I have a motion for appointment of the Library Board? There are three appointments to be made.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Yvonne Cruiser be appointed to the Library Board for a term to expire on October 31st, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Second one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Vera Walters be appointed to the Library Board for a term to expire on October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Absolutely, yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
It's my honor, yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Of course. Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
And the third one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Cheryl Hall be appointed to the Library Board of Directors for a term to expire on October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Do I have a motion for appointment for Municipal Property Corporation? There are two appointments to be made.
Your Honor, I move that Wayne Standage be appointed to the Municipal Property Corporation for a term to expire October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Can we just make him a permanent board member? Yes. Yes.
I served with him back then.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. The second one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that C.E. Beal be appointed to Municipal Properties Corporation for a term that expires October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Do I have a motion for appointment of Parks and Recreation Commission?
Your Honor?
There are three appointments to be made.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Make a motion that we reappoint Frank Shane Beck till October, wait a minute, what's the date? I'm having trouble finding these.
2024?
Yeah. 2024. Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Second one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Tyrell Moore be appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission for a term to expire October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Third one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Wayne Standage be appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission for a term that expires October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
All right. Do I have a motion for appointment of Planning and Zoning Commission? There are two appointments to be made.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Richard Cantwell be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, or reappointed, I should say, for a term expiring October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Second one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Dirk Begumann be reappointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Excuse me. Do I have a motion for appointment of the Public Arts Commission?
Your Honor?
I'm sorry. There is one appointment to be made.
Your Honor, I move that Frank Spurna be appointed to the Public Arts Commission as Interested in Art for a term to expire on October 31st, 2022.
Second. Second. Third, fourth.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. And those that...
I want to say one thing.
Okay.
Okay. Before we move on, I wanted to thank Jennifer Penya for this unbelievably organized procedure.
Absolutely.
It's absolutely the best procedure we've ever had in... It just made the whole process so much easier.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Your Honor, thank you. I also just wanted to thank all of the applicants, whether you got on or didn't get on. We appreciate everybody coming up, wanting to engage and be a part of the community and help shape the community. So thank you to everybody that put in the effort to come out, show up, you know, apply and interview. Thank you. And those that serve on those boards, we appreciate it. It's time-consuming. It's not a paid position. We appreciate you all. So thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would like to echo what both Gail and Krista said and remind folks that there's more than just these boards and commissions.[1390.01]